This conference will now be recorded.
The Sunshine Law is really just about addressing for records, you know, records that you actually possess, or should have possessed if there are retention bills in place, among other things, meetings and so forth. So again, I'm going to pop through these sections. This is why I'm going to spend some time on this one. The heading for this section is "Social Media Concerns", and this is a fairly, it's not one that we cover heavily, or maybe even at all in our training sessions, and it's one that we need to think about for a little bit. So slowing down a little bit on this one. Historically, individuals have gathered in town squares. Do you can picture, you know, the old, you know, people with the tri-corner hats on and ruffled shirts and standing on a stump someplace and laying out, you know, whatever issues it is that they want to talk about. And so, you know, town squares, public parks, sidewalks, those areas have historically always been what we call really an open forum, okay? We'll get into that in a little more detail. Fast forward to the, you know, the 2000s, at least, the 2010s and the 2020s, it's a different world today. We have so much electronic modes of communication, it really changes things. So the use of social media, email, texting by the public, as well as elected officials and city employees, is transforming government. In many ways, it's really great, right? It's an amazing tool, because you're able to, you know, kind of quickly and efficiently get information. You can get a common message out to a lot of people very quickly, you know, in passing. You might have to wait for the newspaper to be published, or for the news cycle to run through, and maybe, you know, you would only catch those who subscribe and things like that. And, you know, again, not everybody bonds social media or whatever, but you've given an opportunity to more quickly and more real time get information out today. So social media is evolving from strictly a tool to disseminate public administration to an intended and unintended public engagement platform for government outreach and constituent communication. So not only is it a way to push information out one way, but it is also a way to get information back as well, good, bad, or indifferent, because sometimes it's not always good. The challenge that we face as lawyers is, and trying to understand what rules to follow, is how courts are establishing those established and familiar laws that apply in parks and sidewalks and so forth to these new communication technologies. And again, this is, you know, becoming more commonplace all the time. So in 2017, the, was it the state here? Yeah, the state of North Carolina passed a law making a felony for a registered sex offender to access commercial social networking websites where the sex offender knows that the site permits minor children to become members or to create or maintain personal webpages. And this is whether or not the offender directly interacted with a minor. And so in looking at this law and the challenges to that law, the court recognized that sexual abuse of a child is a most serious crime. I can often agree with that, and it's an act repugnant to the moral instincts of decent people. But it's clear that a legislature may pass valid laws to protect children and other victims of sexual assault from abuse. North Carolina, however, with one broad stroke, barred access to what for many is the principal source of knowing current events, checking ads for employment, speaking and listening in modern public square, and otherwise exploring the vast realms of human thought and knowledge. And so essentially, the court did two things. They struck the North Carolina law, saying it was too broad for what they were trying to accomplish, and therefore was unconstitutional and violated the First Amendment rights of even sex offenders in that circumstance. But also, what is important is the United States Supreme Court, in that case, recognized social media as a new sidewalk, public square, public park, a new open forum. And that's a game changer for a lot of us. So let's talk about First Amendment. First Amendment forums. So I've already alluded to this traditional public forum. So that's, again, that's the town square, the park, the public street, you know, those open places where people, you know, you commonly see parades, or you'll see, you know, some sort of a protest or something like that. That's a traditional public forum. And in, so that is distinguished from a limited or a designated public forum. So a designated public forum may be a place where, or is a place, where the government intentionally opens non-traditional areas for First Amendment activities. Can you walk into this room at 2:00 in the morning? No. You really don't even have people in here, except for maybe council meetings or other meetings of court, right? And so it's not always open for public speech. And even when we're having a meeting, it's not necessarily open for public speech. We talked about before, there isn't a right at all, anywhere, to, for individuals, for citizens or anyone else, to speak at a meeting of the city council. These meetings are to be open for observation. But when we, but we choose when we open or close the forum, a forum in that circumstance, for public speech. So when we have, maybe if required by law, a public hearing, we open for public speech. And we close. We have, at the end of our meetings, we have our public comments section, where people are allowed to speak during that time, but at other times of the meeting, they're too absurd. So this is a perfect example of a limited or a designated public forum. And then we have the non-public forum. So those are areas, and especially in particular, government property that is traditionally not agreed to the open exchange of ideas. And so the idea about that would be, you know, maybe it would be potentially, you know, the mayor's office, or any of our staff members' offices, you know, people can't just walk in off the street, come in, stand up, come to that and shout. Now, we may open that forum from time to time, but it's limited. Or we just say, we're not going to do that. Maybe, you know, most cities that I work with, and I believe it's true here, considering your layout, is if somebody wants to come speak, they have an appointment. You might meet them in a conference room, as opposed to a particular office or something like that. So the areas that are typically off limits are the non-public forums. There's a place, and maybe you have heard this, I think Marlene would be very familiar with this in particular, there are some folks out there who, they're, they're what we call First Amendment auditors. And there are some folks out there that they're, you know, one of the things that they do is they test cities, essentially, to see how they will react to being videotaped. And so they'll walk into City Hall, and they'll just start taping to see, you know, what the reaction is. And, you know, what we, you know, and, you know, for people in that City Hall, it's often very uncomfortable, and they don't like it, but we have to be careful about our reactions, because if it's a traditional public forum, or even a limited public forum to some extent, you know, that if that area is open to the public, then they can come in, and to these things, they can come in, they can videotape. But there are certain areas of the city that they can't. And, you know, one of the things that we recommend is make sure you put signage up in those circumstances, so that you protect yourself in the areas that is restricted area. I'm sorry, you have to turn your camera off, or step outside, or have to make an appointment, or whatever. But otherwise, if they're out here in the open lobby, where you can kind of wander, then you kind of go about their business, and honestly, the more you ignore them, the quicker they go away. Okay. So risk of governmental social media use. How you use your social media pages matters, okay? And so when we talk about social media pages, you know, you might operate a war-whatever Facebook page, or you may have a Twitter account, or, you know, you may have, you know, any other of the, you know, the basic, you know, social media platforms that you may utilize. And how you use that may determine whether or not you are running the risk of violating someone else's free speech rights, okay? So, you know, because we talked about before, with social media, it's easier than ever to communicate with citizens. It's also easier than ever to violate someone else's free speech rights, their civil rights. One of the most well-known examples of this is Knight v. Trump. It was a 2019 federal case, through the Second Circuit. President Trump operated a Twitter page. And this Twitter page, he operated long before he even thought about running for office, or at least, you know, we made it verbal, he was going to do that. That was his page, and when he became president, he then, you know, continued using that very same page. In this circumstance, President Trump had, you know, put some information out there, and someone was being critical of him, and started, you know, tweeting out, you know, criticisms. And President Trump ultimately blocked this person from his page. That, they said, that's a violation of my free speech rights. They sued in federal court. And the, what the court found is that even though President Trump's Twitter page had been private, and was his own personal page prior to becoming president, that once he became president, and he started talking, you know, on a regular basis, about this is what I'm doing, this is what we're doing, these are, you know, the things that, you know, these are, you know, policy decisions that I'm making, and kind of invited some discourse on that, that he had taken his private, you know, limited forum, or even a closed forum, and he made it a public one, that, and because he was accepting those comments and so forth, he made it an open public forum. So the highest protection of speech, and really anything you do in an open public forum, to limit speech, you know, outside of, you know, really some egregious activities, you're going to be violating them, uh, rights. This case was actually proceeding through the federal court system, went to the Second Circuit, would have gone on to the United States Supreme Court, but what happened in January of 2021? What did Twitter do? They banned, they banned Trump themselves, they're a private company, they can ban him. He was operating publicly as governmental. And that, what the Supreme Court says, we're not going to take the case, because Twitter canceled his account, and therefore the case is moot. So we don't have any further, you know, we don't have any weigh-in from the Supreme Court on that. Campbell versus Reich, that's a Eighth Circuit case. For those of you who don't know, Missouri is in the Eighth Circuit. The Federal Circuit Courts will go on then to the Supreme Court. And this is in fact a Missouri case. Reich is a, is a state rep, I think just north of here, maybe, or north of Columbia, I guess it is, and then back towards the east a little bit, is how her, her district runs. But in this circumstance, actually, the court went the other direction, thankfully, but it does kind of still point out the pitfalls of operating your, uh, social media pages. And actually, we just, this weekend, the whole firm, we were down at a conference, we actually got some additional training on social media. And there are, you know, when you have a long list of cases, we have about eight cases that we learned about social media this weekend. And they pointed at this Campbell versus Reich case as being the one outlier. It was the one where they actually found that the representative's use of social media was not governmental, and therefore she didn't violate. But what happened in this case, just by, you know, is that Reich, while she was running for office, she had, you know, used it as her campaign platform, essentially, to get information about her campaign. When she was elected, she continued then to use it as an elective official. Like I said, this, you know, everybody in the legal world right now is saying, this is kind of an outlier, because, you know, this is very similar fact pattern to the Trump case, that how it got switched over, essentially, private to kind of what looked like a governmental use. Both courts looked at, and this one, as they said that, because Reich had opened the Twitter account to kind of self-promote, that the types of posts that she was making after becoming a rep was also self-promotion, look at what I'm doing for you, look at, you know. And essentially, they, they made a distinction on that, like that. Most of the lawyers who looked at that, and they're kind of said, ooh, I'm not sure I'm going to rely on that case, but I'm not sure that, you know, if it came back up again on similar facts, that the Eighth Circuit would decide the same way. So more than anything, be extremely careful. I've had multiple situations over the last couple of years, where I've had individuals who were posting information on, you know, their council or Board of Aldermen page, and then, you know, maybe got bad feedback, and then deleted it. And that's a violation of free speech under the Trump case. I did have a very interesting issue that came up last week. And this is one of those things where sometimes I will tell you that, depending on how you ask me the question, I might have to answer differently. In this situation, I had an alderman who was trying to operate a War II with Facebook page, okay? And the alderman said, I have limited this to War II residents, only War II residents. We have questions to vet people, we make sure that it's only War II residents. But the newspaper had a question about, and they wanted to join, the individual who worked for the newspaper was a resident of the city, but was not a resident of War II. And what I ended up telling the, the alderman was, I said, I said, legally, I think you could tell this particular newspaper person that they cannot join because they're not a War II. Why would I say that? Because this alderman was very careful to keep a limited public forum to just only War II constituents in that circumstance. However, as the old saying goes, never go to war with someone who buys things by the bear. And so my, what I said was, I said, while I think legally you could, you could keep this individual from joining your page, I think from a practical standpoint, I asked the question, are you going to put something on your page that shouldn't be printed in the newspaper? Well, no. Okay, well, I mean, at that point, like, why, why create trouble that you don't need in that circumstance? And I really, you know, I believe that there might have been at least a challenge to, you know, to test, my legal theory, that he had created a limited public forum. So be careful what you do on social media, because you might invite trouble that you never expected, and it's going to cost you and the city money to fight it. And in many cases, you don't want to end up on one of my slides at some point.
Do you want to entertain questions as they go, or?
Sure.
Yeah, we have our social media policies.
Yes.
And one of the things is, it's like on the city's Facebook page, we have policies that say, if you use bolder language, or whatever, we will remove your, we're, we're, right?
Yeah, obscenity is not protected speech. It's, it's, and we'll say it's more of a gray area, so it needs to be kind of more like threatening, or, you know, other. But if you have, if you have a situation where you've got something like that, like I highly recommend, like, put an emergency call into us, let us take a look at it, because, you know, it can, it can be a little bit of a gray area on, you know, how hard does it go, type of thing.
One behind you.
Question behind you. That's up to the mayor.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Do you have a question, what if you turn comments off on your blog? There's nobody to talk to.
If you can do that, do it. I highly recommend turning the comments off. I don't think Facebook allows that on government pages. They should. Really, you know, my stance on social media is the same as my stance on kind of blindness. You know, it's fine to send a one-way communication to the entire council, okay? But don't you ever reply at all, because that's, you know, potentially, then you've created an electronic meeting that wasn't properly noticed, and so, okay? Same way with social media. I think it's a really fantastic tool for pushing out information to the public, so they can hear it, hear the same message, you know, at the same time, a large number of people. But the problem is, when you start to have comments back, and, you know, some people don't agree with, you know, something that you may be doing, or whatever, and that, you know, causes hurt feelings, and then, you know, you want to react to it, and you really shouldn't, that's where we get into, you know, actually becoming a slide on our presentation. Okay, ethics in conflict of interest is another one that we covered. We have a whole session on at our train, and know that, again, that most of you have been there. Just remember, Chapter 105 is a long, long list of things that you can't do. And remember that each of the sections in that chapter deal with different types of elected officials. So sometimes it's everybody, sometimes it's members of governing bodies, sometimes it's administrative, and so forth. So be very careful, you know, about those, you know, outside of that. Remember nepotism. If you are involved in hiring of someone who is a relative within the fourth degree of consanguinity or affinity, you are ejected from office. It's self-fulfilling, and you can't get, you're gone. So always be careful on that. Okay, so this gets to the meat of what we really want to cover tonight, which is the defining and understanding roles. So where I'm going to start with this this evening is where we always start, right? Because of Dylan's rule, we start with the statutes, because that actually lays out the express words that, that lay out our authority. So, again, if you're down at MML, and you're, you know, sitting at some happy hour or something like that, and you're talking with other cities, even if you're talking with another third-class city, you're going to find out that third-class cities have the bonus of having three different types of third-class cities. And two of them are covered in Chapter 77, and the third one is covered in Chapter 78. So not even all third-class cities are exactly the same. You, however, are a council, you're a mayor council, form of government, you've adopted the city administrator form, we'll talk about it in a minute here. And that information is located in the early parts of Chapter 77. So specifically, Chapter 77.260 lays out what your role is as a city council according to the statute. So here's our express words. So along with the mayor, and these are very close, we paraphrase, in some cases are kind of just like a direct quote, sometimes I change a few words to make it fit better, or whatever. But along with the mayor, the city council has the care, management, and control of the city and its finances. And you have the power to enact and ordain any and all ordinances not repugnant to the Constitution and laws of the state. So, you know, we always have to look, if you're asking if you can pass a law to do something, you have to make sure we're not violating the Constitution, you have to make sure that we're consistent with state statutes, and then we also have to make sure it's within your authority. And this is the basic form of authority here. You, and ordinances that you will deem expedient for the good government of the city, which deals with preservation of peace and good order, the benefit of trade and commerce, the health of the inhabitants, and any other ordinances, rules, or regulations deemed necessary to carry out the powers that you've been given. So it's a fair, a broad range from that standpoint. And you, of course, have the authority to alter, modify, and repeal the things. So that power, you know, we, 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 not only have the law, but you can change the law, but we're going to do that. Throughout Chapter 77, it's actually a fairly, you know, thick, robust kind of statute, or chapter, and it does cover a lot of different areas of other types of authority. And so commonly, when city attorneys get questions, you know, they're usually, can we do this? You know, for you guys, I cracked open Chapter 77, it's one of my first places to look. So we talked about the legal and statutory role of, we talked about the statutory and the legal role of city councils. Both talk about, you know, practically, right? The common sense roles of city councils, which are obviously to represent the public, represent your constituents. Your job as council members is to develop and evaluate policies and programs, to maintain the fiscal integrity of the city. Well, you commonly get reports, you heard a report last night, how are we doing, you know, against the budget? You determine the services that the city will provide, okay? Not all cities provide all of the services, you know, and some cities provide stuff you wouldn't think of. You know, I have cities trying to operate a natural gas utility, probably one you don't have. You know, you guys have, and therefore, you have a hospital, that's kind of uncommon for me. You have, you have a lot of services that you do. I do have cities that generate electricity, and they still are in the utility, you know, the electrical utility business. The common ones are sewer and water services, police and fire, you know, parks and recreation, you know, the common things that we think of. But you determine what you do that. I have cities, governing bodies, have made a decision in some circumstances that they want to get out of the business of providing water and sewer services. And you can actually privatize, and you can sell your service to a company like Missouri American Water, for example. You get out of the business, you sell it to them, they pay you a heap of money, and, and then, but at that time then, you're beholden to the company, and no longer is it controlled by you, your constituents, and your tax dollars at that point. Now you, now you switch that over to a private company. Also, a role of the city council, an important role, is to ensure accountability and transparency of the operations of the city. So let's talk about, since we've been talking collectively about the council's role, let's talk about individual council members, what your role, what your role is. Keep in mind, an individual council member has little, and really almost no power, okay? Your power comes in the group that you're in, in, in being a member of the council. And remember, even, you know, if you're sitting here and you do not have a forum of representatives here, you can't even conduct business, right? We have eight of us here. If we don't have five of us in the room, even the four can't get together and do anything on behalf of the city, okay? And, and the way we're set up structurally, adding the mayor to four doesn't fix that, okay? So it takes five council members to do anything, less than that, we're stuck, okay? But ultimately, the city council has a body and all of the power, essentially, you know, that power that was given down through the state statute. All right, let's talk about the statutory role of mayor. So, again, third-class cities, mayor council forum, this statute is provided, this information is provided at Section 77.250. So the mayor is the president of the council, okay? And, but, only votes in the case of a tie vote, okay? Like I said, there are other types of third-class cities out there. Jockeys, I think, I'm wrong, Homel, the one they were a third-class, they were like this. I think that Moberly, if you're familiar with Moberly in Missouri, they're the type of third-class cities where the citizens elect a council, and then when the council is seated after the election, they elect a mayor from their own group. So there is no mayoral election in Moberly in cities like this, okay? So they, their slide do not look like this. The mayor presides at the city council meetings, right? So we talk through the mayor, you know, the citizens, you know, they're up here, if they're asking questions, if they're talking to the mayor, the mayor directs traffic, they're going to kind of do this motion, right? So information goes to the mayor, the mayor passes it out to, you know, whichever council member, maybe staff members that need to respond to it, and then it comes back to the person speaking.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It says, American pardon people. What is that really?
Yeah, we'll get to it. Let me get down my.
Okay.
Don't read it.
Okay.
Jointly, the mayor and council have the care, management, and control of the city's finances. We read that in the council rule, but, you know, again, it's a combination of the mayor, you know, again. So, you know, when we were flipping through the slides earlier, we have separation of powers, just like the state government, just like the federal government, right? We have the legislature, and we have the administrative branch sitting, you know, essentially right here, okay? And then our judicial branch comes and sits in here, you know, well, actually, they don't sit here anymore, again, they go down to the courthouse. The mayor has the superintendent control of all officers and affairs of the city. The mayor shall take care that the ordinance of the city and the state laws related to the city are compliant. So again, understanding that the mayor's role is administrative, it's enforcement, okay? You guys, as a council, you all set the rules. The mayor's job, and we'll get to the city administrator in just a moment, the mayor's job is to make sure that that all gets carried out, okay? Mayor, again, that's where the part, the mayor is to make recommendations to the council to improve the city. There's some other language in there that I didn't add, you know, about finances and so forth. And to, uh, Councilmember Crawford's point, yes, the mayor has the authority to pardon people. Did you have further questions then to that?
What do you mean by the power to pardon people? I mean, if somebody gets a traffic ticket, he can pardon them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, if anything that's.
We don't need that just now.
Right, we need to go back to 105. Anything that essentially someone could be, you know, cited by the police department that goes to, you know, my folks at prosecutor and the judge, you know, says you're guilty of this, the mayor does have the authority to pardon. The mayor can veto bills, that's at seventy seven two seven. When we talk about bills, what are we talking about, right? Remember those little, you know, piece of paper on the Saturday morning cartoons or whatever? Your ordinances, your laws are ordinances and before they become ordinances, they're bills, okay? And so if you, as a council, do your first and your second reading, you approve the bill, it goes to the mayor for the signature. The mayor can veto. Under third class cities, the mayor is allowed to do what is called a arisen objection. And if the mayor decides to do a written objection, then it comes back to the council to see if you are going to do a veto override. You have that ability and may be familiar with that and with state government as well. I will tell you, I've been doing this for nearly twenty years, this factual point, I learned yesterday when I was drafting this stuff. The mayor can also veto resolutions or orders. The mayor can also veto resolutions or orders of the council that call for expenditures to the revenue. I did not. So if you did sit through our training earlier this year, we talked about vetoes, we probably have, you know, we said you can only veto a bill, you can't veto a resolution. After next year, in third class cities, the mayor can veto resolutions that call for expenditure of funds.
I have a question. What power does the mayor have with or over the state department?
The mayor is the, is, I mean, he's essentially the boss of the chief, really, pardon on that. Yeah, the mayor is the boss of the chief. So in the end, I mean, the chief, in your organizational structure, you know, you report to the council. But the council actually doesn't deal with the day to day, that's what we're about to get into here, right? You don't deal with employees, you deal with setting what the policy should be and what the rules should be. If there, you know, if there's any good, bad or indifferent, if something is achieved, you achieve. Then you can, then what happens is the mayor and his chief administrative assistant, which we'll get to in a minute, handle that, okay? Okay, so let's talk a little bit more generally about mayor's role. So when we think about the interaction between the council and the mayor, what we're looking for is council members and the mayor should routinely meet to discuss ideas or concerns, okay? Because in the end, you know, that motion that I was making before works beyond justice realm, okay? Because, you know, each of you are responsible to your constituents and you're hearing something from your board constituents, you have concerns. And whatever those concerns are, you should be, you know, getting that information to the mayor and the council, which we'll cover in just a moment, right? And likewise, the mayor should be finding out from you, what are the concerns of your constituents and your board? So I have an idea, because in the end, the mayor's responsibility to take that policy that you all are set, that direction that you're setting for the city, and the mayor ultimately is who puts wheels to that and makes it move, okay? The mayor works closely with the city council, I'm sorry, with the city administrator to move council roles forward, to anticipate issues on the horizon and to manage the action of the council. So again, you know, the mayor truly is kind of a liaison really between US legislators. And then, you know, really, on the one hand, it's staff to carry out, you know, what you want. But on the other hand, it's actually constituents as well. So he's kind of really kind of between, sandwiched between, you know, staff, you know, you guys are kind of the buffer between citizens and staff and how to get things accomplished. All of this works most effectively if the mayor understands the council's concerns and shares the feedback with the city administrator. So we, you know, in drafting this, we're trying to look for kind of, you know, third party, if you will, examples of how to be a good council. And so you see here at the top of this page, this is actually a sample role of members that was developed for the city of Kingston, Canada Council Staff Relation Policy. So, and these are good, I'm going to read through them. For members of a council, you should conduct yourselves in an ethical and respectful manner at all times. You should act in a manner consistent with the effective and responsible government that we, municipality, in a transparent and accountable manner. You should set clearly, set and clearly articulate strategic goals and objectives for the municipality based on consultation with city staff and where applicable, members of the broader community, okay? Keep in mind, we say this in our training, you know, in the screen, kind of flows into everything else. This is an important point to me. No offense, but most of you, and maybe all of you who are elected to office, you're amateurs, okay? You probably never did anything with elected office before. You may never do anything with elected office again, okay? These folks and your city staff are professionals. This is how they put food on their table. This is how they put their children to college. This is their life calling, this is what they love to do. And they're good at it. Is everybody good at it? No, I mean, that's going to be the case anywhere, right? You have a few bad apples, you're going to have some really fantastic people. But overall, what I will tell you, I work with lots and lots of city staff, lots of governing bodies. Keep in mind that your staff is here, they want to be here, and this is their life calling. And their job, and we'll get to this tonight, is their job is to make your lives easier, get you the information that you need in order to make the decisions that you need to make to be effective leaders and to lead your community, serve your constituents. Council members should render decisions regarding matters of service level delivery and corporate policy based on the consultation of city staff and where applicable, members of the broader community, to respond to concerns from the public and where appropriate, refer those concerns to city staff through the mayor chief administrative officer for action. To only give direction to the city staff through resolutions by the council as a whole, okay? This is important, remember, as an individual, even less than five council members, you don't have power, okay? You have to work together to create that power, to give the direction for the mayor, for the city administrator, to work with the staff to get the things done, okay? You need to be open with, open to discussion with and seek clarification from city staff as required and obviously as appropriate in the chain of command. And to be respectful of the role of city staff pertaining to their administration or management of the day to day operations of the municipality, okay? Again, this is a Canada council of all things, right? It's applicable literally anywhere we have, you know, this type of leadership role. So I've been promising it for, you know, like half an hour, you know? Here we are to talk about the city administrator. Pardon me, should I leave the room? No, no, you're good. So city administrator is covered in seventy seven point oh four two, squarely in the middle of third class cities. Interestingly, I guess, I may get not interesting, oh, I failed to change this. Usually if I'm giving this to fourth class cities, I have to remind them that if they're looking in chapter seventy nine where all their laws are, this doesn't say anything about city administrator. Why? Because it's hidden in chapter seventy seven at point oh four two, that city administrator, that's the governing body of any third class city or of any fourth class city, and I apologize, I didn't change that one, I missed that one edit there. You have the ability to provide by ordinance for the employment by the governing body with the approval of the mayor, a city administrator. So the city administrator is the chief administrative assistant to the mayor and has the general superintending control of the administration and management of the government business, officers, employees of the city, subjects to the direction and supervision of the mayor. So what I'll tell you is this, okay? I represent cities of all sorts of shapes and sizes. I've got some cities that are, you know, a population of three hundred, they're lucky, we couldn't fit the number of people in this room in city hall in some of those cities, okay? They do not have the resources for a city administrator. So that typically in those cities, they'll have like a four member board of government, a mayor and a city clerk. And the mayor and city clerk, you know, essentially are the administration of the city. Sure, our friend, city clerk, is exactly that, right? So for cities that are fortunate to have the resources to be able to bring in a professional like this, essentially what we're doing to some extent is you as a council, and I say you as a council, right? You represent, you know, the councils that stood behind every one of these mayors on the wall in here, okay? Those councils have made the laws of the city that carried through to today, okay? But at some point or another, one of those councils looked at seventy seven oh four two and they said, hey, we need to bring in someone that we can delegate some of the mayor's responsibilities to, okay? And so essentially, if you go and compare the language from seventy seven oh four two to the language of the mayor, there's something, okay? And so really, what we've designed by statute is a, you know, joined up that kind of seamless, you know, administrative head between the mayor and the city administrator, okay? If you have to ask me who Trump, I'm going to say the mayor, okay? Mayor Trump, because the city administrator is, what did I say? The chief administrative assistant to the mayor. So the mayor, you know, from the administrative side is that, you know, the chief executive officer, you know, like the president of the government. Okay, so what is the role of staff as we're going through roles? So first of all, I would say is the role of staff is to offer professional advice, we kind of talked about that. The role of staff is to implement council decisions to establish sound administrative practices and to maintain the operations of the municipality, okay? They staff at whatever level, going from, you know, essentially mayor or, you know, or city administrator, you know, all the way through everybody you can think of on your staff. Their job is to take care of the day to day operations of the city with the direction that this council has kind of put forward. This is the way we're headed, okay? So let's talk a little bit about public administration and kind of how it should work versus kind of how it does sometimes. So when you take a look at this, you know, this kind of graphic here, you see that at the very top of the governmental action, strategic planning is the very top, right? And then as you make the strategic plan, you work through the management control, operational control, and then the actual work is being done. So you have the levels three, you know, four, three, two, one, down to that. But the work gets done at a very broad level, the policy setting gets done at the very top, okay? City councils, as a rule, actually spend very little time in level four, okay? Most governing bodies probably spend their time in levels three and two, where they're trying to get involved in the management control or even the operational control of the city. And they're not, they're not taking care of the strategy, they're not setting the course, they're not giving the city staff the direction that they need to go. And what is the result of that? When you have, and it's really in essence, kind of micromanagement, okay? And when you do that, when you're involved more in the management and the operational control as a legislator, then staff gets frustrated. Why? Well, you're micromanaging them, you're in there telling them how to do their job, that they have education and, you know, decades of experience in it. Decisions are not being made by the most skilled individuals on how to carry out that management or operation. And worse yet is we're spending all of our time in those areas, then we don't catch strategy. We don't have a direction, we don't know which way we should go in, so we're just kind of paddling in circles at that point, okay? So super important for councils, think about this, is when I'm here, I'm big picture. I'm big picture, we've got to get that, we've got to get the staff, you know, going in the direction of that, of that picture. So what are the proper roles of council? So an ideal council is going to spend its time towards the top of the pyramid, right? This pyramid is a little bit different than the first one we saw. But here, they're saying level six, five and four, which are, you know, doing things like organizational surveys to promote continuous, you know, improvement. Setting governmental expectations to guide the staff, setting strategic plans to guide, you know, the management and the operational control and the work of the city. Similar to the previous graphic that we saw, most councils operate at level three or level two on this one, which is essentially council governance, you know, kind of the stuff. And admittedly, again, I work with a ton of governing bodies out there. What my personal observation is that when you come in to do the job, it's kind of easy to do the tangible stuff, right? Okay, I get this, I know whether I should, you know, want or not want this liquor license approved or, you know, whatever, okay? That's tangible, it's easy to get it. The strategic stuff is way harder, right? That's a lot of, like, that, you have to kind of think outside the box for real to get there. And but that's where councils really should be, is where is this city going to be five years from now, ten years from now? When we passed that upon all the way up this wall to where it gets to today, what was our piece of that from the time that we were on the council? Okay, what's your legacy going to be? Bad councils operate in that day to day focus. I kind of chosenly, I cannot choicefully to get. I have a client, at one time I walked in and I, one of the city council members, it was another third class city, one of the city council members was talking about how he had been out on the job site today and I had my elbow all the way up to the drainage pipe like that. And I was just like, wait, what? Why, as a council member, was your arm in any drainage pipe? Hell, no, stay out of the day to day operations of the city. Don't forget your hand up the drainage pipe, you know? Your job is to say, here we set the budget for, you know, improving our water system. That's the responsibility of the mayor, city administrator, the public works director and so forth, to get that stuff done, you know? But yet I had an alternate, a council member in this circumstance saying, you know, how we were talking about having their arm up some drainage pipe, you know? Same city, I had an elected official who, this was actually a, probably a story I could have told on social media, where this person was parked in the right place, right? She was awesome, but she was, you know, so excited for the city and she decided, you know, she was going to encourage people to chip in by leading by example, and she went out in her dress and her high heels and she was using an O B meter and she was trimming up weed and she's like, you know, everybody can bitch into it, she posted it out on the website. And, you know, you think that was like, oh, cool, that's a really rah rah moment, whatever, get those people's comments for it. Why is our council member out there in a dress and like, why is this happening? Like, does our city grow? And she's like, oh, I didn't mean that, man. What she started doing, deleting the comments, uh, you know, now I've got, now I've got a social media problem on top of, right? So again, as council members, your job's up here, okay? You know, we set that direction and realize that takes care of getting us there. Here's another way to look at these relationships. And I like this one, this is a title, it says, governing body, staff, flight analogy. So I kind of look past the screen, you kind of see as the airplane is coming down, you've got the different bubbles. But also take a look at those green and white bars that go kind of across like towards the bottom, okay? So when the bar is green, you can kind of see the legend there, that is something that is the council's responsibility. When the bar is white, that is your staff's responsibility. So a lot of information on this graphic altogether. So when we talk about, like, look at the first blue square, the purpose and vision of the city, that's fifty thousand square feet. That's, you know, what direction are we going? Where do we want to see this city five, ten, twenty, forty years from now? That is the job of the council. And you can see that correlates, you know, the long range playing idea, and you see the green bar to the far left, okay? So in that circumstance, the council's role is to affirm, to develop that vision, that purpose of the city. What is the staff's role in that circumstance? It's smaller, but it is to say, yes, we hear you, you're our legislators, this is the direction you want to take it. We're going to affirm that, we're going to find ways to get you headed in that direction. We're going to give you information that will allow you to get there. Strategic goals, okay, we're coming down a little bit, we're at forty thousand feet now. And you see that the green bar, you know, shifts a little bit to the left and we have more staff, right? So what is the council's job in this circumstance? Establish those goals. What goals do you have set for your city for the next year, for the next five years, for the next ten years? What goals do you have set for your city for the next year, for the next five years, for the next ten years? Because that is what councils should be doing, okay? Set that big picture, what direction are we going? Staff's responsibility at that stage is to align the goals with the resources. Okay? Well, if they're saying that in the next ten years, we wanna have completely, you know, thirty years, whatever number you're gonna pick, we wanna completely redo the city's water infrastructure, okay? Now, you know, public workers can start saying, okay, if we did this over a period of time, this is what it'll take, here's, you know, the, the places we would need to start, here's the kind of money you would need from either a fee standpoint or if we financed it, how to do bond financing, we start lining up our resources with those goals. Now we drop down to thirty thousand feet, we got our priority action items, right? This, this stuff we gotta get knocked off the list first, we're at thirty thousand feet. And you see that now that bar is starting to shift a little hot heavy on the council side, but it's, it's a pretty good mix between council and staff. So council's role at the priority action level, uh, stage is establish and prioritize those action items. Now, can you think of a place where you guys do that, maybe on a regular basis? An annual basis, is that a manual?
Yeah, sure. Strategic planning, we do all, it's the two at the beginning of the year.
Budget approval, uh, those types of things, alright? That's where you're kind of setting, you know, fees for an annual purpose, you know, like, what, what are our priorities gonna be for this year? But you can also be looking at those a little further out as well, five and ten years, uh, on that, uh, too. What staff's role at that time? That's to start to implement those priority action items. Our plane comes down further, we're planning an oversight at twenty thousand feet. This is essentially that first place where we actually see staff's responsibility greater than the council, uh, in that. So there's where we're reviewing, uh, the council is gonna be reviewing, adopting budgets, conducting meetings, and the staff is gonna be preparing plans and overseeing the functions to carry out, uh, those items that are identified as action items. We get down to ten thousand feet, the plane is getting closer to the ground, we've got our projects. You know, again, you see here, the bar has shifted. This is primarily a staff responsibility with some, uh, gov-, uh, governing body input. Um, governing body responsibility here, also writing the contracts, you know, especially the big ones, right? We don't worry about, you know, something that's gonna be a five hundred dollar contract, you know, that's something that can be handled day-to-day. But the bigger stuff, you know, that is gonna be a financial resource, you know, a financial, you know, drain even or, or impact, we'll say, that's gonna be stuff you're gonna be involving with the council. At the same time, staff is planning and completing those projects. They're coming back and saying, hey, you know, you guys said you wanted to have twenty-five percent of your street resurface this year. I can tell you that halfway through the year, we're at twelve percent, we're excited about that, you know, um, we're, we're making progress. And you can report that back to your citizens, your, your constituents. Finally, we hit that runway and we're talking about the day-to-day work, you know? The public works officials are supposed to have their hand in the drainage pipe, not the council member, right? So in this circumstance, with the, the council's role when it comes to day-to-day work is you're going to be engaging with the community and the staff, right? We've kind of talked about how the council and the mayor and the administrator kind of are this line that is a... I don't wanna treat it like if they're opposing bodies, when you've got, on one end you've got constituents and on the other end you've got your staff. And the input that you get from your constituents feeds through that, that buffer to get to getting stuff done for them on the staff side and by person. And so here, your responsibility is to know what your constituents want, report that back to your buffer so that that information can get out to staff and they can go get the day-to-day work done, okay? In the meantime, staff's responsibility at that time is you to get that, right? Getting that stuff done, okay? Alright, that was rules. So let's talk about, except, we, when we keep going, we need, anybody need a break? We're good to go, I'm...
Is anybody here...
I'm happy to keep going, I know there's some birthday cake that somebody needs to be eating here, so I'm...
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, yeah. Alright, so, um, I'm gonna share with you, okay? Okay, I'm gonna share with you Lambwerth's rules. Um, I don't know if anybody here knows John Lambwerth. Maybe not. Okay, so John Lambwerth about fifteen or twenty years ago was the mayor of, uh, Jefferson City, okay? And I found out about Lambwerth's rules because Nathan Nicholas, who, you know, uh, works for me, like, used to be the city administrator, but he was a city attorney first in-house, and then he became a city administrator of Jeff City, and John Lambwerth was the mayor at that time. And I, you know, from time to time, you've been working, you've heard maybe, you know, somebody say, you know, mayor, you know, Mayor Lambwerth always said, don't play stump with John, okay? That's part of Lambwerth's rules, and we'll, we'll cover it here in a second. But John Lambwerth actually had a really interesting approach to the roles and responsibilities of governing bodies and councils. And, um, you know, and we like to share them here. So I'm gonna read them as, you know, that, this is how John said it, so, you know, don't shoot the messenger and someone keeps up. So, but they're, they're good and, and they, you know, hopefully they make an impact. So first of all, John said, "Council meetings are for final position statements, debates, and votes, not for rolling out novel ideas to make everybody think you're a stud." Okay? So what he's essentially saying is, watch the grandstanding, you know, we wanna be efficient with our work here and, you know, it's not the time to bring out some crazy idea without vetting it with administration and staff first. If you vote against the measure and lose, briefly state why you disagree and drop it after twenty-four hours like it's old news. You don't keep it in your arsenal for two years to justify other actions, okay? Don't hold a grudge. I mean, we're here to carry out constituents' business, but we're also here to act as a body of eight legislators, legislators, and we, we work by a majority vote and, you know, sometimes you're gonna win, sometimes you're gonna lose. But that's what makes it all work, okay? If somebody disagrees with you, don't take it personally. Maybe on this issue, you simply had your head up your butt, it happens to everyone, uh, once in a while. Even if they deserve it, do not publicly criticize the integrity or intentions of a fellow office holder or staff person. Disagree with ideas, not people. Prestate statements of disagreement with an acknowledgement of, of, of the other person's perspective. And when you're thinking about that and you just were talking about public comments, do the same with your private comments. It's just as important, okay? Don't play gotcha with staff, right? Don't stump a chunk. If you have a concern about something, discuss it with someone in advance of any public state. Staff makes mistakes, so do you. Public statements should consist of recommended policy changes to fix the problem. There's a lot in this one, okay? If makes cities look completely dysfunctional, it makes you look like a left-hand has no idea what the right-hand is doing if you wade to a council meeting to spring something on staff. Had you just asked the question when you got your packet, that could have been looked up, and the answer might have been in your, in your inbox, you know, within hours, certainly before the meeting. And it sure makes you look more efficient than if you catch staff going, well, if I could have only just looked that up, I would have an answer for you, but now I'm gonna have to get back to you. Wow, nobody knows what they're doing, okay? The other thing is, I'm a big believer in, don't point out a problem unless you've got a solution. That was the end of that one. If you find a problem and wanna talk about it publicly, wanna get Lambwerth's set it, there it is. Have a solution ready, you will be asked for, okay? What's your solution? What do you think? Learn how to tell constituents that you disagree with them. They'll respect you for it, don't be a wimp. Constituents aren't always right, or they don't always, more importantly, they don't always have the same perspective that you do, working in the city hall, knowing what staff has provided you information. And, you know, and many times, people really, truly fundamentally do not understand how local government works. And it takes an education process. Each vote deserves your independent analysis and vote. Anyone who trades votes doesn't deserve to hold office. Yeah, Lambwerth. Allow measures to be considered on their merits. If you want to pay, play a parliamentary game to sabotage a bill, then run for higher office. You're way too sophisticated for us. That was my point on Robert's rule a little bit ago. Don't build private alliances with segments of staff, it is ultimately destructive. So again, in the words of John Lambwerth, they're actually, it's good advice. So what are expectations of elected officials? As elected officials, you should be and are expected to understand the responsibilities of public office. You know your role, know the rules, know what you're supposed to be doing. Comply with the law, okay? Um, practice good behavior, uh, perform your duties, participate in public meetings. You know, you are the voice of your constituents. So keep that in mind. Be effective in your communications, avoid conflicts of interest. We skipped chapter one oh five tonight, you've been trained on it, stay out of that area, okay? It'll just bring everybody down. Deny gifts, retune even favors, keep confidential information confidential. It's important you have a public trust in the circumstance. And when we have confidential information that needs to be protected, it hurts your constituents, it hurts the entire community if that information gets out and could have a physical impact on the city. Be prudent in your use of fiscal resource, resources. Uh, be careful when you are speaking on behalf of the city or appearing to. Those, uh, sometimes are, I mean, they're gonna be highly related. Respect and adhere to the city administrator form of government. That is a, a chain of command issue, okay? Uh, be, uh, create a positive workplace environment, okay? These, these are the things that are expected of council. I will say, I represent a lot of cities, I've always, you know, thought very highly of how this particular council gets together. And I'm not gonna say this particular, I'm talking about the council of Sedalia. And I, I've been through many iterations of you all in, in various roles, but you guys have always, in my opinion, have done a good job. Uh, you'll hear some more stories here in just a little bit. So what are the staff members' expectations of council members? Prepare for your meetings by reading the reports in order to know the agenda. If I had a nickel for every time I walked into some board of all new meeting or city council meeting and literally watched a council member crack the seal on the agenda, uh, for the evening and the packet, I would be a nickel millionaire. Um, so read it, read up on it. And that way, again, you're not caught asking questions that were either answered in the staff report or that weren't answered in the staff report and you and maybe your colleagues needed that information. So you may ask and clarify a question, and typically what will happen is staff will respond and respond to all of you so that you have the information you need to make a decision. Whenever possible, call staff if your question is before the meeting, so answers can be referenced and shared during the meeting, okay? They stand on all the facts on a given issue and make the best decision possible. That, staff's job is to give you the information. Don't ridicule or make light of staff in public if, you know, and I'm, I'm a firm believer in this from a management side. You praise in public, you criticize in, in private, right? Um, criticism should be made to the city administrators though. Be careful, we'll talk about interference in a little bit, uh, and it's, it's a, it's a big deal, and I'll tell you why. Do not assume that staff is wrong and the citizen is right when there's a agreement. Sometimes that's exactly what it is. But many times, as we've talked about, staff are the professionals and, you know, they'll, they'll be able to give you usually a good justification and support for, you know, what they're telling you. Compliment staff when and where appropriate, okay? Everybody likes a little praise from now, now again, and sometimes it's lonely at the top of you all. Trust and respect the staff. Uh, if council disagrees with a staff recommendation, which you can and should from time to time, explain the why. Don't just say, well, I don't like that, or I don't believe you, you know? You need to, you know, give some justification as to why that's the case. Don't hold a grudge if you disagree with a staff recommendation and act in a fair, ethical, and consistent manner. So again, those are staff expectations of council. Here, on the flipside though, should be council members' expectation of staff, okay? This is a two-way street, right? So staff should be well organized and anticipate the type and kind of information the council will need to perform a duty. We should be sitting there thinking, okay, if this issue comes forward, if I was a council member, what would I want to do? Okay, let's get that information in the staff report so that it's right there, okay? And the more that you all communicate as a elected body with your staff, the better you will know each other and the better it gets. And it's a success, you get success when that happens. Those are cities that are operating at a really high level, okay? When I see those happening, I give you goosebumps. Respond to requests for information in a timely and professional manner with your staff. Prepare accurate, well-documented and well-written reports that where appropriate, lay out the options, okay? You know, one thing, you know, like, if you heard advice from me, and usually I'm like, well, you can do, on one end of the spectrum, you can do nothing, on the other end of the spectrum, you can do this really egregious thing and the rest is somewhere in the middle, we'll talk about it in a minute, okay? Provide exhibit illustrations and or pictures to help council members visualize, uh, the location or layout of proposals, okay? So, you know, I know, and again, you guys, if you disagree with it, just let me know. But usually, you know, very graphical information or photographs do upset the state when staff is explaining, uh, uh, you know, their, their position or, or what the facts are in a situation. Staff members should leave out personal or political bias from the reports. They should help to orient new members of the council and provide educational opportunities for all members. Staff should be accessible to council members whether in person, at meetings, or over the phone. Again, it's in the chain of command. Staff should work to keep all council members equally informed. Staff should never show favoritism. I'm a huge fan of just putting it out shotgun style and then if you have a question, come back and then the responses, and sometimes, you know, point clarification, you know, this question was asked, here's the answer. Make, make the council's decisions work after they're made. That's, that's a good staff that can do that. And the staff also should act in a fair, equitable way. Okay, so how do things go wrong and what do you do about it? So here, you can't ever see that, whoops, making this. So what causes difficult council members? You know, what, what can be the root sometimes? Well, that member may come in, and they may be representing completely new people in the new community. Doesn't make them wrong. Makes them, you know, it, it, you might be seeing the very tip of, you know, an iceberg that's coming in or a change that's happening. You know, are they being difficult or are they just being different in that circumstance? Another way that council members can be difficult is if they have inappropriate expectations of what their role is, okay? Keep in mind, council works as a group. You're individually coming, you know, to any staff member, I need this, I need that, it's wrong, okay? As council members, if you need anything, you take that from the mayor or the city administrator and they will take care of getting it to the appropriate staff, okay? Campaign promises can be problematic, you know? A lot of times, again, you know, we talked about before, you know, technically all are amateurs when it comes to, you know, you know, city operations, you know, this isn't what you do for a living. Um, and many times, people who are running for office haven't even been in at all and they really don't understand how things work until they're making promises about something they don't understand. And then when they come in, you know, what I typically find is, you know, April election, by about June or July, things have kind of leveled out. Whew, you know, April, May, June, you run sometimes. So, um, you know, if they, uh, if they promise while they're out something, just drink and swamp, you know, you know, veteran members of council might take offense to that. Veteran members of staff might be against that, because, you know, you're smearing their, you know, their reputation when you're saying that stuff. More and more, it seems like we're getting local issues mixed up with national issues. We're even seeing that at the general center, we got crazy lobbying paths that are forcing, you know, stuff on cities that, you know, partisan stuff that doesn't really matter at all, right? Sometimes it's an urge to fix things, you know, the guy that's got his hand up the drainage pipe, you know? Uh, uh, failure to understand the council administrator relationship causes difficulties. And sometimes fear causes difficulties, you know? People are, are concerned sometimes if they don't wanna be the one who says no, but the one who votes differently because either they're gonna catch heat from, you know, fellow council members or their constituents. So I use the Jeff Foxworth picture here because it occurred to me when I was going through this, uh, the last time I gave this presentation that it sounded a lot like, uh, you might be a redneck, is. Uh, because you might be a difficult council member, is. You're interfering with employees. If you're demanding special access, as, you know, because you're a council member, if you're saying, I need access to this or that, or I'm, you know, I, 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 I need this. As a council member, rarely it's I, okay? It's at least by, a, a majority of bylaws, you have to say. Uh, if you treat every staff presentation as an inquisition, you might be a difficult council member. Uh, if you routinely dis... Uh, if you routinely disclose confidential information, if you spend all of your time on minutia and miss the big picture completely, you might be a difficult council member. That's just a misunderstanding of your role, right? Big picture versus day-to-day. If you're never prepared for a meeting or regularly asked questions that were answered in the council meeting or council packet, you might be a difficult council member. If you're never willing to bring closure and always want more information before voting, you might be a, a difficult council member, okay? If you refuse to abide by the meeting's rules of order, circumvent the manager and going instead to internal staff and the manager's assistants, again, you know, according to the chain of command, those are all symptoms of being a difficult council member. If you try to make, uh, staff and the city administrator fellow, uh, members look bad, that, that is another symptom. Okay, so how do you, how do you deal with a difficult council member when he happens? Well, remember, if you're dealing with someone who's like that, to exercise emotional maturity and intelligence, stay professional, okay? If you wrestle a pig, you're gonna get dirty, pig-like, okay? So, uh, don't go down to their level. Old firms require positions, but in a way that does not communicate personal animosity. You always never be able to set them. Disagree with ideas, not people, right? Keep your communications open. It won't be helpful to shut down communication with a difficult member, uh, though he or she may choose to do that themselves. Keep everything in perspective and remember what, what we're doing here. Insulate staff from negative conduct to the greatest extent possible. Help the council and staff take focus on the work of the organization. Accept that the best we may be able to do is minimize the negative consequences of the outliers' conduct. I had a guy one time that he, when he got, we talked about some of all the things that we just talked about in the last slide. This guy, when he got elected to office, he walked in and publicly told everyone, I have two jobs here. I wanna run the mayor out and I wanna run the city administrator out. We're like, okay, that's gonna be fun. So then this gentleman proceeded to, um, he would constantly write nasty emails to the mayor and the city administrator, like for example, on Memorial Day because no one from city staff came out on Memorial Day afternoon to raise the flag back up to full staff. That's what he had to do, right? So, uh, the other thing that he would do, was a real treat, was every time the mayor had a proclamation, he had this little statement he would say. Uh, Madam Mayor, I, uh, just need to state for the record that, uh, while I agree with the position being taken, I disagree with the person making the position and I'm gonna, you know, excuse myself in the dial. So what he was saying is, I agree with this person getting, you know, the, you know, whatever daughter of the American Constitution or something like that award, but I don't like you mayor stuff. While you're giving this proclamation, he would get up and walk out of the room until it was over and then come back. Good times. So, fast forward to, uh, we finally got to the point where he was such a jerk back there. The rest of the council members were so fed up with him, they decided to censure. And so we had meetings to walk through, the censure process, they adopted a censured matter, he was censured, and at the next meeting, it just so happened to be in December, right, when people make candidate decisions, and coincidentally, not this guy, right? Coincidentally, it turns out that the mayor decided she did not want to run for another term and the city administrator announced that he was, had then recruited away to another city. And the guy stood up and he said, well, my job here is done, I resign, and he walked out. Wow. So like I said, you know, I compliment you guys at the council, I really mean it because I think it's trash. Okay, so here's procedural rules to control meetings. This, this will help, uh, the mayor, again, actively present an officer. Mayor, you gotta control the meetings, make sure we don't get stuff out of, out of hand, you know, have kind of people shouting in from, you know, out of quarter or anything like that, you know? Make sure that, you know, there's not infighting on the council, you know, and, and, you know, that, that's your job of police that, that piece. Um, don't allow council members to speak unless recognized, don't allow the public to interrupt. Um, always do the motions before the discussion, right? So we, you know, we say, there's a motion, second, now we have discussion. You guys do that right, you guys follow that, but, you know, sometimes cities will get it cart and pole horse and they'll start the discussion and not even have a motion. Uh, roll call votes do force commitment, so, you know, they're not always required, sometimes they're necessary. Um, stick to the agenda. Items not on the agenda should be taken up at another meeting or should be formally voted by, you know, the forum, a majority of the forum president. Council comments should be comments, not motions, okay? There's actions and there's how you feel about that action, right? There's difference. What if we have really, really bad behavior? Okay, these are some of the really, really bad behaviors. So if you have these things, this is what to do. So if there's sexual harassment, call the city attorney. Follow your personnel policies, you know, we need to get that nip in the bud taken care of. If there's criminal activity, call the police, okay? Get it taken care of. If there is an ethics problem, contact the ethics commission. Um, if there's nepotism, we talked about it earlier, you're out of office, you're not meant to go, you're not cut to the bone. What is the nuclear option? Well, this is when we have to take someone who's acting badly and really, you know, address the issue. Okay, so there are several levels of, you know, the nuclear option, um, from intervention standpoint. So the easy, you know, the easiest level is that personal intervention. It's, uh, okay, you know, we need to have, you know, the mayor and a council member or two left in the forum go and talk to this person and say, look, you are acting a fool, you know, we're tired of it, we need to just fix higher, higher work, okay? And if you don't, we're gonna have to take more serious action. You hope that that happens. My guy explained before, he would just email out, he would love it. Solicit help from others, sometimes a facilitator, sometimes you need to bring in somebody that will help to counsel that person, you know, and, and, and work better. I've had to fill that role as a special counsel for other cities. They brought me in and, you know, the city attorney might be sitting there, but it was kind of, they needed to hear it from me because they all had to listen to this person afterwards and so I, I could come in and be the, you know, not from the city bad guy. Formal outside intervention, formal complaint, investigation, censure, depending on what it is, I mean, it might be a criminal investigation, it might be, you know, some sort of an ethical investigation like that. And the truly, uh, uh, nuclear option is impeachment, okay? That bottom picture, uh, on this slide is an impeachment hearing, it's from an impeachment hearing that our firm was involved with over in O'Fallon, Missouri, about a little bit later than this last year, okay? O'Fallon had a council member who just, you know, had one role and, you know, a situation where the, uh, you know, the council had come together, they made a hiring decision, they voted seven to three to make a decision. This person within the three didn't like it. Um, and then after the decision was made, instead of letting him go, decided to conduct her own personal investigation into the person that they hired, just so happened that this police chief knows about the statute that protects police chiefs, came and fired him, and hired him. And it ended up being the whole thing. And so, uh, as we sit here today, even now, it's not fully resolved, even though we've been through the impeachment, she was removed from office last, uh, she was removed in January and, uh, she actually filed a federal case and said that her free speech rights were being violated and the federal courts said, well, we're not gonna do anything until the, uh, you resulted with the city and the state courts and then the city removed her, she never filed an appeal, but, um, now the, the federal court dismissed your case about two weeks ago and they're filing an appeal today, so, so it's awful. I mean, it cost the city a boatload of money, it's political nastiness, it's awful, um, but sometimes, you know, it's the thing that has to be done to fix, you know, the problem. And so what happens in those circumstances is you adopt articles of impeachment, you know, you have a hearing, a public hearing, there's, you know, lawyers on both sides that present evidence, uh, the mayor sits as the presiding judge, the council sits as, as essentially judge and jury essentially, um, and then you make a decision about whether to remove somebody from office and it is, it's, I, I'm a person who would never want to practice family law, you know, nobody wins in a divorce and, you know, it's very similar to that. It's just, it's, it's very politically and emotionally draining process. I highly do not recommend. And, uh, yes, we've, you know, we've had to do a few. I've had some that were easier than that. I had a mayor one time who pulled a gun on two different city employees and that was an easy impeachment. This one, don't think that. Okay, so let's just jump on positive, though, what are some habits of highly effective cities? Good councils have good needs, okay? Be smooth and productive. Staff lets the council know when the controversial issues are coming up. Everybody look out for each other. Give yourselves heads up, make sure everybody's got the information. You as council members, if you're hearing from your constituents, get that information with the mayor, get it with Kelvin, so that can get to the staff members and vice versa. Staff members, if you're, you know, get, bring in, you know, bring in the information that you're hearing from constituents to the council and so forth, so they don't get whine about it as well about how they're doing. Everybody give everybody enough information to make informed decisions, um, and, but don't invite folks to micromanage, cover in a second. Um, do the math, right? If you guys, when you're looking at stuff in the staff report, you wanna see, you know, like, it's not just enough to say, we think you should do this, but it's the why we should do it. So that's kind of for staff. For council and for mayor, follow the agenda, okay? Don't bounce around, don't change stuff around too much, you know, let people have a consistent flow on that so they know what to expect. Always follow good procedures, um, make the minutes easier. It doesn't mean this Robert Tools is the best procedure, but have a procedure and follow it and use it. Uh, make the minutes easier and, you know, it also gives staff the ability to be able to gently correct when, you know, we need help doing those things. Staff should never invite the council to micromanage, you know? So my graphic here, the public is saying, we need a place, okay? Might be a community center, might be a, okay? So council hears that message loud and clear and they set the direction. Let's get this place, let's get this thing, whatever it's called, community center, this one, we've already done. So you see a little arrow kind of in the middle there going, you know, to the, to the right that says do it, right? And staff's responsibility then is to do it, okay? But if staff turns around and starts saying, well, how big should it be? How old are you guys? I mean, and they ask you all the micro, you know, the questions that invites you to micromanage, then we're not being effective. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, staff's responsibility is to take the direction that you've given them and make it happen, then they come back and report it to you. If you have any corrective, uh, suggestions for them as, as a council, then that's where that gets done and that's effective, um, self-care and, and a little, uh, we talked about it a little bit before, but always keep that council member decorum. Always be polite, show respect to other council members, the staff and others. Always address the chair, who in our case is the mayor, uh, and always use titles or last names to the extent possible. You guys probably hear me do that, you know, like where I would say, you know, um, you know, even like our, our transient services, it's madam chair, you know, mister mayor, you know, madam council member, you know, so forth. Um, it, it, and I think doing that, it sets a tone for everyone else in the room as well so it kind of creates that decorum and it keeps, I think, when you do that on a regular and consistent basis, it reduces the opportunities where people are gonna be throwing chairs in here or something like that, you know, they're trying to follow the formula. Turn your mic on when you speak and turn it off when you're done. Don't get caught saying the thing that you, you should have thought anyway, right? Don't get caught saying that out loud, especially on a microphone. But speak to the audience in ear and avoid side conversations. Like I regularly sit at meetings and either people, you know, don't put their mic up close or, or, you know, they're sitting back in their chair and you can't hear what they're saying, or they start having a side conversation and you can start to see people in the audience or they start leaning and they're looking, what's going on?[1458.82]